Paul, do we do this just like a regular meeting where you call it to order?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could even do a pledge.
What's that?
We could even do the pledge. Pledge of allegiance.
Yeah.
You could.
If you would like. So where it's, uh, let's see, six, six oh five, I'll call and order this, uh, Select Board Work Session for September twenty second, two thousand twenty. I'll ask everybody to stand and join me at the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, liberty, for all.
So I'll start just by reading pursuant to the Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand twenty Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law, chapter thirty A, section eighteen, and the Governor's March fifteenth, two thousand twenty Order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. There will be no in-person attendance of the, um, members of the public at this meeting. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can view the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we're unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. All right, so the purpose of this meeting, I apologize that we're starting a little late, that's my fault, I got stuck at work for a few minutes, but, um, so the second item on the agenda, we're going to set the goals for both the Select Board and the Town Manager. Does anybody want to open the discussion?
Well, I will if nobody else wants to.
I have a list, but go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I figured probably mine are on everybody else's list, too, so, um, so the first one on my list was, uh, obviously the sewer options, uh, you know, what we're going to do with that, um, including, uh, you know, costs, uh, timelines, availability, how comprehensive it'll be, um, you know, there's a, there's a lot to go into on that, and, uh, I think we're, you know, depending on, hopefully at town meeting, we'll get the funding to do the, the study and then, uh, go from there, but, uh, I think that is a very high priority for the coming year.
I also had that on my list, um, I think you said timelines, I said kind of short, medium, long term, we had talked about, so I think it's the same thing. One of the things I was wondering if, if the group thought it would be worth doing is looking at kind of the root cause, like, I understand we got surprised by multifamily housing, but there's a process in place right now where, like, if the planning board's going to approve something, at some point they get input from the sewer, um, and as these things come up, I don't know if there's something that would help us from not getting to where we are again. If we looked at, like, is there, is there some change that we need to make in that process or in when proposals come forward? Should we look at something earlier than when the project's actually proposed? Is there a different way that the sewer commission and the planning board should communicate? But it just, it just seems to me like, how did we get surprised with multifamily housing or, or the number of units that went up? And could there have been something that we could have done differently? And it's not to push blame, but it's to more look at if we're in a situ-
Process.
Right, process, and, and is there a, is there some improvement that we should be making to the process as we get all these other new things in place?
Paul, maybe I could-
So that was my thought.
Yeah, maybe I could ask you, so, right now, is the planning board allowed to base the decision based on the effect that the project has on sewer capacity?
No, because as we, as we heard from council, you, you've got either sewer connection or onsite sewer, and the zoning bylaw, you know, wha- what we have, and I think Paul Haverty explained this the other night, is what we have is a moratorium, what we don't have is a zoning bylaw on growth or, or growth moratorium on zoning. And so in essence, the planning board receives a plan. It's up to, you know, it, it's up to the applicant in, in essence, in terms of what is it you're proposing in terms of, you know, you either have a sewer connection or you have a wastewater treatment facility.
Right, but what I'm asking now is, forget about where we're at now-
Right.
-in the past-
Yeah.
-the process-
Mm-hmm.
-that was in place, so if, 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 uh-
There's been, no, when, when a project goes before the, the planning board, you know, e- even to date, there's, there's no, you know, report on sewer capacity from the project, that's not, you know, nor water capacity-
Is that, is that allowed?
Nor-
Could, could the planning board request sewer capacity and/or water capacity?
I think they could notify, and we were sort of having these discussions amongst the staff today, you know, there, there could be a notification from the planning board, but, um, unless there's a zoning moratorium in a growth bylaw type of thing, the planning board cannot deny or, or-
Right.
-or postpone a application because of sewer capacity.
I guess Paul Haverty did say that.
Yeah, that's what I said, Paul Haverty said that the other night.
So the sewer part becomes a separate thing the applicant has to go get approval for.
Right.
Is it because we aren't-
Now, well, we do, well, now, for example, and, and you've seen this, that when, when a project comes in, whether it's River Neck Road, UMass West Campus, what have you, we encourage and we offer to the applicant, and many times the applicant does it, we have an informal meeting of the various departments and inspectors, so if somebody, somebody comes in, they'll have a meeting with, in which around the table would be the, you know, zoning enforcement officer slash building commissioner, fire chief, police, DPW, community development director, myself, town engineer, and so forth, and those items get discussed and, and, and are made aware of, hey, you know, the water district is another one, and, and, you know, and those type of things, so that all gets done now informally. So the idea is it's part of the expedited permitting, so when they go before the planning board, they're given that preliminary review, and then once they go in, and, and, and again, we've exercised that even with the UMass West Campus thing, that they've come in, we've had discussions, even, even today, Evan was contacted by the River Neck Road Mercury computer site in terms of, you know, what are their steps forward, uh, in, in terms of the project, so, so, yeah, it does take place, but when it goes to the formal level of submitting the application to the planning board, um, that, all that sort of front work is done, so the idea is they go before the board, and, and it, that's why it only takes two or three hearings generally for a usual case. Sometimes you have a setback, like, for example, on the, uh, situation in the center right now with the Oddfellows Building, they sort of got stepped back because of the DEP issue with the, with the floodwater, but, and then they called that joint meeting with the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board, but now that it comes back, you know, it's expected that that'll be done in two or three meetings, so I guess what I'm saying is that work is done informally, communicated to the applicant, um, in terms of water, sewer, uh, fire protection, all those type of issues, code, zoning, all that is done in an informal process, um, before the board, and, and in some cases you see, there is a formal thing where they'll come in for applicability, you'll see that on, you know, you've seen that with Nine Acton Road, you've seen it with the Oddfellows, and that's sort of that initial stage where they'll come in and have those discussions.
Okay.
But to answer the technical question, no, there's nothing that ties water or sewer capacity to the planning board's approval process for-
So then maybe it's a less complicated question that I have, then, is it internal to the process within the sewer department or the DPW? Would it be worth looking at, is there some modification that should be made, or is there a, like, a predictive database or something that we should be looking at so that whatever our new capacity is, we're able to foresee where it's going sooner than when it's expended?
That ideally-
Much like when we had the question about affordable housing, and Evan came and said, okay, well, I do do a predictive analysis, is, is there some step in the process that we should take where we're actually looking at that proactively?
I, I think that ideally is the master plan update, I mean, that's, that's really where all this comes from in terms of, it flows from the zoning. You, you, right, right now, the planning board's in the process of updating the master plan, and those are the macro issues that they're supposed to look at, sewer capacity, infrastructure, zoning development, and maybe, like you said, what comes from there should be a closer tie-in in terms of how do we track the master plan to the reality that goes forward between updates? And so, and, and so what I envision being going forward is you would probably have an annual or semi-annual report, probably semi-annual report, where it comes in and says, okay, this is the development we have, this is our remaining capacity, this is what we have going forward, uh, whether it's water, sewer, electrical, those, those are the type of things, but that goes into what we call them a master planning process for the community in terms of what are the, the, the issues that we're trying to address.
But the day-to-day execution of that is within the department, so they would be the ones responsible for doing that from a process standpoint.
Right, and, and tracking that.
Once the master plan is updated, there's no more master plan-
Right, but the pla- but the planning board owns that, and that, and that's what I'm saying, is that maybe the process, that has to go forward where, where there's a check-in, I mean, because if you, you may recall a decade ago when we had the, there was a master plan implementation committee, were you on that, Pat?
Yes.
And that group, it was a group, and, and we met every quarter or so?
We usually met either right before or right after town meetings, so about twice a year.
Yeah, and then we looked at what were the issues of the master plan and how would they be implemented, and that one did have short-term, intermediate-term, and long-term goals and check-ins. So yes, what you're describing is an appropriate process, the question is what is the vehicle? And I think the vehicle that I've seen in the past in this community was the master plan implementation committee, where they came back and said, okay, what were the goals of the master plan, and then what were the attainable action items in short, long, and medium terms, and then we gave reports, um, I think every six months or so. Dave McLaughlin, I think, chaired that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Pat was on it, and there were a handful of other people on that, so, yeah, that, that does happen, um, and, and that's probably appropriate going forward, and, and again, it, it, it could go to a variety of issues, and that's why I say master plan, because it's not only water, sewer, it could be school, uh, capacity, it could be affordable housing, it, you know, it, it's, and that's really, like I said, it all flows from that document. And so I think that's, and, and, and under the state law, the planning board owns the master plan, and so that, and then that became, becomes the vehicle, I think, for this master, master plan or these individual issues going forward in terms of planning and monitoring what needs to take place going forward.
Is any of this an issue that, I mean, we had a sewer commission, right, at one point when this was, and then we dissolved it, or?
No, right, but under the charter, the sewer commission was, was identified to dissolve upon the completion of the sewer project, and that happened, it, but, and if you go back to the sewer commission back in ninety-seven, they clearly identified back then that the, that town had, would have a sewer capacity issue, and that's why they went to town meeting with the home rule petition in two thousand two, which became the Act of two thousand three, which established the sewer capacity fund, uh, and then became effective in, in April of two thousand and four. And so it was clearly known that we were going to hit, that we, the town could not do the build-out under that plan of ninety-seven to service everyone, and that's why they implemented that fee going forward. What, what has happened is, obviously, is the change in the nature of development in the last two to three years has accelerated the end line. Now, my preliminary analysis of the data for fiscal year twenty, because everyone's asking, what's the twenty data? Because we saw the nineteen data in that report, it went by fiscal, it went to fiscal year nineteen. Well, fiscal year twenty, that ended on June thirtieth of twenty, which is basically three months ago, it looks like our sewer flow is down from nineteen. But the trend clearly is increasing sewer flow, and I, so I think that's where it goes. So the bottom line is, it's not a function of the lack of a sewer commission, it's basically a function of we, we hidden, we hit a need to act now, which probably would, would have been more, had the trends continued as they were the first six years of the two thousand teens decade, probably would have continued out to probably twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six under that, under that pace, because there-
So, what, I'm sorry, go ahead. So, um, several questions. In nineteen ninety-seven, when we, was it ninety-seven when we started to plan sewage connections?
Well, no, there was, there was a sewer, the sewer commission did a study in ninety-seven, and then brought it forth in two thousand and two to town meeting.
And we chose to buy capacity?
No, 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 they bought capacity long before that.
Okay.
And, and they even sold capacity before that, they sold it, they, first they offered it to Westford, Westford declined, and then they sold excess capac- excess capacity to Tingsborough.
Okay, so in nineteen ninety-seven, did they know what the limits were going to be on the, on the sewer lines that they were putting in?
Yeah, what, what they had is they had a bill, George, the sewer commissioner, Mr. George, interrupt me at any point in time, but they, they basically had a map of the entire town, and they looked at every parcel in town and had a projected flow, and, and as I said, saw even in ninety-seven that they, they weren't going to make it with the then permitted capacity from Lowell that was acquired in two thousand and seven? I think two, two, yeah, I'm sorry, and, that was, that was the-
Before that, I think.
Before that, yeah, ninety-seven, that, that expired, you know, ex, that, so basically it was a series of thirty-year agreements with the city of Lowell-
Okay.
-that, that expired in two thousand and seven, um, that went back to seventy-seven, thirty years, and then the next one goes, you know, goes forward, so that's, the, yes, the, the answer is, is they saw back then, which is why they implemented the sewer capacity fee.
Okay, so in nineteen ninety-seven, then, one also figures that we had master plan committees in two thousand, and then the one in two thousand and ten?
Yes.
Okay, so in two thousand and ten, ten years after, you know, we saw what the, uh, what was happening with the sewers, what was taken into account with population and with the actual capacity? Because at a certain point, you run out of, you know, if you're, if you're counting it by bedrooms, you run out of, like, mother-in-law apartments or whatever it was that, that was planned, so like, you just, you run out of that space, so I'm wondering where the mechanism is to say to a developer, at this point, you need to have a water treatment plant, we municipa- municipally cannot handle the amount of wastewater you're going to produce, and I'm thinking about this specifically in terms of, like, manufacturing, like breweries. Folks really want a brewery, it takes about ten to fourteen gallons of water to make one gallon of beer, big breweries have their own wastewater treatment, so I, I'm wondering if anyone has actually thought about the things we want for Chelmsford and where we're going to find that excess capacity?
I, I mean, I think the, that question may be best answered by the master plan committee, who's been meeting now for well over a year or so in, in terms of what they've done. I think that they could probably answer in terms of, what I can tell you is if you go back to the last master plan around two thousand and ten that Jim Lane directed, think about the time we did, we had just come out of the Great Recession, and there wasn't a lot of expansion or growth going on in Chelmsford or anywhere at that time, I mean, the number of homes you could count on a, on a, on a hand that were being built per year, and certainly we weren't into the, it wasn't out the era of what we've seen, as we said, in the last three to five years of multifamily homes, apartments, and so forth. It was, and, and I think I provided that data where it, basically, you just had static development for basically a period of almost a decade, if you go back to two, the recession to, to, to the middle of, of, of the teens of, of this year, and so when that master plan was developed, there was no discussions about sewer, water capacity, electrical capacity, or, or growth issues, because there just wasn't anything, and I think, and as I kind of indicated when, a few meetings back, it's an extraordinary dynamic change, the, of what you've seen in, in the housing preference, uh, you know, in the community in terms of apartment and condos.
I, so, Paul-
And so, yeah, so I think that, that's, I think that gives you the background in terms of, well, why didn't, you know, why didn't they see that, what was going on?
I'm un- I'm uncomfortable walking away from this meeting saying it's the master plan, because there's nobody here that owns that, um, from the planning board, and something in my gut still says that there's something internal to our processes, and maybe it's a coupling between the two, so would it be acceptable to walk out, to agree that we'll look at a lessons learned analysis and identify any process improvement going forward, whether that be internal to the doc, the, the departments or a master plan implementation committee? Because something broke, a- a- and I don't know what.
There was a lack of oversight.
And like I said, there's nobody here from the planning board to, to engage in this conversation, so that could be something, that could be a first step, is to have some kind of cooperative discussion with them, if we really think that's the place.
And just to, to give you-
But the essence of it, I think it's important that we do some kind of lessons learned and figure out if there's a modification to our processes moving forward so we can minimize the probability that we wind up here again.
And, and, you know, for me, as an example of where probably there was either miscommunication or misunderstanding, you know, I attend a lot of these economic development meetings and, um, project meetings, things like that, and I know when Mo- when Lisa comes in, Lisa Maroni comes in and gives us her updates and her reports, and when we go into Economic Development Committee meetings, we talk about Chelmsford going from silver to gold, gold to platinum standard, and the tech, you know, there's this technological geographic regions around the state that the, the technological committee, I guess, looks at different towns and says, you're a silver, gold, or platinum area, so that when someone's coming and looking for a place to bring a business, they can look with the state and say, well, this is an area, and, and they look at, you know, access to highly educated employees, uh, access to the highway systems, public transportation, water, and sewer.
Yeah.
And, and Lisa's always said, well, we're, we are now gold, you know, and so I'm, I'm thinking to myself as I attend these meetings, well, we don't have a problem with any of these issues, and, and it's always sewer and water are on that list, and now she's applying for platinum, and I'm thinking, well, if we're applying for platinum, they're, they're obviously, we're, we're good on all these issues, so in my mind, there was never a question to ask, how are we actually doing on water and sewer, because why would we be applying for platinum status if we have water or sewer issues? Someone must be looking at that and saying, nope, we're good to go. So I, so to me, there's got to be a disconnect somewhere, because if we're being told in one area, we're, we're good, we're meeting and replying for higher and higher statuses, but yet now we find out we're not, so there, there had to be some sort of misconduct, and I don't want it to happen again.
Yeah, I mean, I think the nature of the town, and we've seen this in the discussions in the last several months, you've got an elected planning board, you've got an elected board of health, you've got a Department of Public Works, you know, you've, you've got in essence, a, even though it's a small town, you've got different-
Not a small town.
Dom- domains of, of responsibility, but you're right, that the linkage isn't there.
Yeah, we got a quarterback.
Right, they're right, there's, there linkage isn't there in terms of, of the communicating of the issues. Now, I think you're, you're seeing that in terms of lessons learned, you're seeing the planning board, my understanding and speaking to the community development director, they're now relooking about the density of, of provisions in the zoning bylaws for high-density projects, you know, should that be scaled back? And I think those are the type of issues that come up, and also the water district comes in, uh, with the same questions in terms of capacity. So I, so I think the answer is yes, there, there should be some mechanism, I guess the question is, is what would that mechanism be, and that's what we should discuss, i- is it, I mean, we've talked in the past about chair meetings or inter-board meetings and so forth, you know, should there be that type of mechanism where the planning board chair, the board of health chair, the select board chair, conservation chair, you know, school committee chair, and then DPW, town manager, community development director, you know, sort of gather to, to look at these micro iss- macro issues of, of the community in terms of where, where are we trending, you know, what, what should we be looking out for, what are the concerns going forward in terms of, in terms of a planning process? So, yeah, I think the answer is yes.
So we don't have to solve it tonight, but-
No, but I think that-
We're only here to set goals, not to solve goals.
Right, but I think that's the issue, there should be some type of a consortium or, or gathering of the various parties.
Well, what exactly is, is Weston and Sampson going to do in this study, what are we going to ask them to do? Maybe that would answer a lot of questions there.
I mean, they're, they're doing engineering work, basically, I mean, that, that, they're doing the field work, they're going to, they're going to go out and, and, you know, to one extreme, determine, can you build something at Southwell?
Yeah.
To, to another extreme in terms of, well, what, what can we obtain potentially out of the Lowell plant for additional capacity, to, well, what, can we go to Barica for a portion, can we do, you know, do non-capacity issues such as infiltration, whether it's within Chelmsford, or, or do we fund infiltration projects that affect the Lowell plant from, in Lowell? They're, they're sort of doing the engineering work of, of, of addressing the sewer capacity issue, there's, you know, there's, there's not a lot on this, the, uh, demand side that you're seeing taking place, you know, I mean, that's all supply side, how do you supply capacity, how do you supply capacity, so that's really what they're-
Are they going to look into, say, you know, a, 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 a plant over in, in North Texas?
Yeah, yeah, Southwell, yeah, yeah, that's-
So they're going to tell us how much acreage we need and-
What it would cost, and then if, and if that threshold is passed, then, then it would come back to the board, the select board, and say, should we then proceed with hydrological and, and, and other testing out there? Because of that hundred and fifty thousand proposal, about eighty-eight thousand is, is to do all those analysis, the remaining sixty would be to go to what we, what I'd call a phase two, saying, do we explore what should be done at Southwell, whether, and that, whether that's a viable site for a packaged treatment plant? And I can assure you, and when I read the thing, that was sort of the final phase, but I don't think that final phase gets executed until this board, as the select board of the community says, yes, we want you to go there, because that's a big step, and it's a lot of money, uh, and, and it's a major undertaking, and then, and that's where it involves not- And, and it's a major undertaking and then, and that's where it involves not only Chelmsford, but other towns because that obviously may involve Tingsborough. If you're going to build at Southwell, then, then you have discussions with Tingsborough in terms of, are you going to do that?
You could also grab part of Westford there, you could eat Route forty or, or one-ten, I mean, just the main line.
So I think that report, George, goes to the first part of the objective that Pat articulated.
The discharge, how long would a, a permit for discharge normally take, Paul? And are they still issuing them as, as a.
That I don't know. That's the big question is, is will they allow you to discharge into the river? As you know, there are a lot of groups that are concerned about the ecology of the Merrimack River. So I, and I think that's something that they've got to come back and tell us because on any of these things.
Well, before they even, you know, expend all their money.
Yeah, exactly. You're not going to go out there and, and start doing test borings and, and hydrological studies if the bottom line is, is, if there isn't a realistic timeframe or even attainable to, to, to put, put a plant down.
I would imagine that they, they deal with the EPA or the DEP. I don't know, is it, which one has the most jurisdiction or?
They both do.
Yeah, so, and the Corps of Engineers works with the EPA or?
Yeah, yeah, the Army Corps of Engineers would be part of the federal level oversight.
So they, they would know probably right out of the gate if, if that would be a feasibility that we even pursue. I mean, maybe, maybe we either, we either pursue it or we just throw it out. I, I mean, I think, you know, I don't, I don't know. I mean, uh, because it's, it's in the kind of a natural, because of the infrastructure is already, I'm not talking about for the whole town, but you could take, like, say half of it, part of it, you know, whatever flows in through North Chelmsford now.
Southwell, yeah.
Which is what, almost fifty percent of, thirty-five percent or something?
A portion goes through Southwell.
So, I mean, that would be a big, a big hit and, and we're paying with, a million seven, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
But we're paying with like a million seven already. Is that just for, for that, that piece, right?
Right, for our, for our treatment in Lowell, correctly.
From, from just from North Chelmsford or for the whole town?
The entire town.
But that's, you know, it's part of the solution. I mean, I, I guess the goal setting tonight would be solve that problem. But I, I think there's two separate goals here, which is, you know, we should address the sewer issue. But then this, it's a separate goal for what Virginia said is to look back as far as why did, why do we have to issue?
But I think the, but I, my whole point is I think Virginia's issues go beyond sewer. They, they should be all, you know, sort of the, and that's where I was going to the master plan, looking at the macro issues of the town. Because you don't want to be dealing with the same thing with either school space, water. You can think of a variety of issues that you don't want to be, you know, caught saying, oh, how do we react to this crisis? You know, in, in the short term. And so, and so I'm saying is those type of, I think those type of coordinated meetings should take place.
So that would be more under a, a development type goal rather than a specific sewer goal, correct? I mean, it, it sounds like what, what you're saying.
Yeah, I think it's a macro goal of, of.
Those are two separate goals. Sewers, one, and analysis processes, another.
We're in a crisis with the sewer, so.
Right.
I don't, if, if it goes under a macro goal, I'm okay with that. But I don't want to lose sight of really understanding what happened with the sewer because I think that's going to inform the output of where do we improve.
Right, but those are two separate goals. The sewer issue is a sewer issue.
Solving it is a.
Process of how we got to the problem of sewer issue is a separate issue.
Yes, and what Paul's saying is the process issue, the near-term thing that we're dealing with is the sewer. But with that, it's an infrastructure look is, is what he's saying, I think.
And it may not be just infrastructure. It could be issues of diversity and other, those type of issues in the community that at a macro level need to be coordinated amongst the, the various boards, whether it's school committee, selectmen and, and select board and so forth. So I think, I'm saying is that I think that type of.
You make it too big, you know, we're never going to.
No, but I'm saying is there ought to be a process where there's a check-in, perhaps every six months amongst the board in terms of the macro issues. I mean, we, we have a town meeting every six months, perhaps maybe the alternate three months opposite that, you sort of have this check-in and saying, hey, you know, where are we at? What should we be looking for? What, you know, what are, what are the issues, short, medium and long term, that we ought to be, you know, planning for?
Paul, as we sit here and talk though, you know, and you say, well, you know, we have an elected planning board, we have an elected board of health and we have the school committee. And I'm just going to ask this, do you feel any of this falls back on you?
Sure, I think we all have responsibility for it, yes. And I, I think we all do. My whole point of saying these elected things is, is we have elected boards. Let's be honest, they tend to be guarded of their, of their responsibilities. And, and we, we see that with the planning board with zoning. They sort of feel that they own the zoning. You see that with the board of health on, on the, the health regulations and, and septic and so forth. And, and, you know, and I think you see that, so I'm saying is I think, I just think that that's why you should get these people, you know, have these type of meetings twice a year so you can get to those levels. But I think it's a shared responsibility on everyone. None, none of this happened in a vacuum.
So I have a question. If the planning board is at some level the owner of the master plan and we have an elected board that tends to be realtors, developers, maybe an occasional lawyer, we never have a planner on there. In recent, we, we had a planner and the planner was ignored every time the planner brought up actual planning issues for which they had a degree. And I, I, I wonder about having somebody whose job it is to actually plan and not just say, well, where's the money? How much money can we make off of this?
Who's that Evan's job?
Who's developing it and would that be nice? So I, I am wondering, like, like where, where does having someone like Evan sit there? And, and does he, is he aware of things like water and sewer? And does he ever have an opportunity to say to the planning board, this is great, this will make this much money according to your economic guy and your developer guy and your realtor guy? But how much, where is the sewer? Where are the roads? Where are the sidewalks? Where's the transportation? Where's all of the infrastructure that planners look at?
I don't think the plan, I mean, and, and some of you attend more planning board meetings than I do, but I don't think the planning board has those discussions in terms of revenue from a project or those type of.
I think that that's, that's like an aspect of them.
That's not, that's not.
Emily, when you think of that board, I'll, I'll defend them a little bit on this one because you have Mike and Nancy are, are neither one of them are, they're more planners.
But no, they're super into it, like, like, yeah, no, they've, they've got, they've got some real granularity.
Mike Walsh is, is, works for a development company, but his, he's an engineer, I think, his background.
Right, but I'm wondering, I'm wondering about that overarching person who is tied into what is going on at the town level person. Like you still need somebody who's, who's aware of what the actual capacity of the infrastructure is.
Isn't that Evan? Isn't he the community?
Evan's the community development director, but Evan works for the, you know, works for the planning board.
Right.
But those type of inputs come from the other departments. They'll come from the board of health, they'll come from DPW, the town engineer. I mean, you see the town engineer sitting at the table at the planning board meetings. So Evan's job is not to be the, the de facto engineer. And you have the fire department weighing in on fire safety and so forth. So that all funnels up to.
That would be another thing to just sanity check Emily's point as we look at how to meet the goal. Because we can't solve that tonight.
Right.
We're identifying the goals, so let's go to the next one if we resolve.
We'll be here till next Thursday.
So, so I think, you know, when I, when I look at what's facing the town right now and, and one of the things that I did do too is I pulled past goals just to, because, you know, normally in the, in the past, we'd sit down and look at your goals and say, what was done last year? Take it off the list, keep on what we need to keep on and keep moving. But there's a couple overriding pressing goals now. And as we said, the sewer, secondly, addressing the issue of how this came to be. The third is the traffic situation slash road issues in town. And, and I'm just listening to these, because these are, I think these are joint town manager and selectman goals.
I also had the traffic as a continuing thing that we should be looking at.
Yeah, I mean, I, I like the safety committee and the traffic committee that's in place. And, and I think we should probably get more updates from them and, and work closer with them to find out, you know, the process that's being made. But then as a separate issue, the North Chelmsford traffic situation that we have up there with Ledge Road and, and as you said, Virginia, not to make it inclusive of just Ledge Road, but all the traffic that's being affected up in North Chelmsford for the trucking area.
It's a big cut-through area besides being, besides that problem. It's a danceable road, you know, people get off at Route three at way, way up in Tingsborough and then they come down Danceable Road, they come, you know, down Tingsborough Road. And they get off the rotary and they cut Route four, you know, I mean, it's, it's impossible to get through from here to the center.
The problem that I have with cut-throughs, and sorry, Paul, I'm just cutting. I've seen a lot of these videos, people forwarding me videos of people getting upset at drivers standing in the road, flagging them down because they have New Hampshire plates saying, you're cutting through, you can't cut through here. It's a public road.
I get it, I'm just saying, but the problem, that's the problem.
Right, as long as you're following the speed, legal speed limit and, and obeying the rules of the road, you can't sit there and say to someone, you can't.
A lot of them come off 195 and they come up through Burke, not Berkeley.
Brentwood and.
Brentwood.
Brentwood, you know.
So the, so the.
Those side roads up there, Westford Street.
Right.
Pine Hill Road, you know, they'll go do anything, they cut through, you know, but.
But, but, so I think traffic is one of the ones.
The goal that you're identifying is to continue working on traffic improvements and also specifically the North Chelmsford.
Trucking issue.
Truck issues.
Yeah.
What I was going to say, I get a little nervous when we segregate, and this is not to slight North Chelmsford, but when we segregate an area of town that has specific traffic needs. I mean, I'm sure that if we met with the Brickhill Road neighborhood.
Agreed.
Or the one-ten.
That's the thing, or the one-ten, I'm just saying, that's, that's, I'm just offering that as a word of.
And that's fine, maybe we just keep it at the traffic and truck issues in town.
Traffic and safety issues.
Traffic and safety issues because, you know.
Yeah, even Hazen Road.
Hazen Road being another one, yeah, there's.
My, my only point when I said in North Chelmsford was, I didn't want to call it Ledge Road.
Right.
Because it's, it's like water in your house, it goes everywhere, so, all right.
And I don't know if you can break this out separately, but I, I mean, personally only because I've been involved in that access road for so long, I think there is a window there that at some point will close, that we need to have a focus on.
That's part of the traffic and safety.
Right.
And I think if we can focus on it while the issues are hot and fresh, then we might have some sort of ability to, I, I, like, I don't know. I feel like the state either needs to use that land or lose it. Like, there's got to be a way.
That's a separate discussion.
I know, but, but like, but things like that, like, you know, sometimes you just have to focus on an area and alleviate one problem before tackling the next in depth, but.
So just going through the list from two years ago, I mean, Paul, you had, we had on here the Oddfellow's House, the Fisk House, that's done. It's moving forward. We had the Merrimack Williamsburg Riverbank, that's done. UMass Lowell campus, that's out of our hands at this point. We can monitor it and move forward. Civic Day, I don't know if that was still anybody's issue. I think we have more pressing issues than Civic Day right now.
I think we can't handle it right now with the pandemic.
Tax classification study committee as far as the effects of splitting the rate. But again, I, I think that is less not, as important, you're right, with the pandemic and the meeting requirements and everything else going on right now, I, I don't mind. For me, I'm just saying, I don't mind putting that aside. We have the, the interchange analysis for the Route three corridor and that's being done. We did the public safety. We're moving toward, forward on the age-friendly community, that's underway. Plastic bags are gone, stormwater, that's two years ago and then last year.
Go ahead.
You want to?
I'll save it, go ahead.
Okay. The Vinyl Square parking lot access, which we went round and round on that, but that's not.
That seems to be off the table right now.
Till something out of our hands changes at point is moot. The Vision and Values, this was last year, is we had the Vision and Value, but you're moving forward. We're going to get a presentation at.
Well, I think one of our goals needs to be to implement the recommendations of the Vision and Values Committee.
Which we're going to get that updated at town, at Fall Town Meeting, right?
It's going to be the same thing we already accepted. So I think tonight we ought to look at what those recommendations are and say what we're going to do in our goals this year to implement.
Good. Can we just put a pin in that? The fire station layout, we still talked about what to do there. And I think what came out of that study was you're proposing a rehab engine two. Is it, is there a next step to that?
Yeah, the next, the, the big issue is going to be what's beyond engine two? How many, how many stations going forward and where are they located?
So we'll need to know some update on that.
Well, I thought, yeah, we mentioned at one of our meetings that we were going to have two extra engines fairly soon because we were just finishing repairing the second one. So we really have two spares?
Engines, trucks or stations?
We have two spare, we have two spare fire apparatus, but the replacement schedule, as I mentioned last night, for fire apparatus basically calls for a new engine the next two fiscal years.
Even though we have.
And that was part of the discussion that we had about if you, how are you planning for state, for fire apparatus acquisition is somehow dependent upon how many stations you're going to have.
Exactly. So we're going to need to know your, your sort of thoughts and.
Well, it's, the, the consultant prepared the, the, the report.
Right, but we'll have to circle back around to that.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I had a, are, are we talking about this yet or are we still going through your list? Because I had a related one to that.
Um, you can jump in.
Or do you want me to put a pin in it?
No, go ahead.
Okay, um, so what I had made a note of with respect to the fire station was, we had MIAA come in and basically audit the station, right? And say, this is what needs to be, this is what isn't up to code or doesn't pass inspection or whatever the right language is. Did they review just that station or did they review the other ones?
No, they reviewed all the stations, yeah.
So, okay, so that goes along then with what is, what is the next step between the outcome of, of their work coupled with the study that was done on?
Exactly.
The number of stations.
So we're going to need some sort of a update on that and recommendations and sort of.
Yeah, I mean, basically you need a plan. What, what, what direction, what's, what's the direction to go? I mean, the reason I brought forth north at this time, and I would have brought it back in the spring, but for the COVID thing, was under any scenario, the North Fire Station remained. And that report came back and said whether you, it made no sense to relocate it to Richardson Road because the response times didn't materially differ. So hence the plan now is to renovate and expand the North Fire Station. But the next step after that will be where? You know, what, what, what is the plan? Is it five, four or three stations?
How do the other stations fare in the MIAA evaluation? Are they in as bad a shape as Engine Two?
Probably worse.
Some are worse. I mean, I think the most, yeah, I think Engine Five is probably the, yeah, the South Chelmsford, South Chelmsford.
That's, that's, yeah, I mean, you walk in there, it's, it's bad.
But at some point you've got to decide, and then, and then it comes to the Manning issue. So you can't ignore the Manning issue versus the station and apparatus issue. And that becomes, and there's obviously money behind all of this.
And is this something you'll make recommendations to us about? Or are you going to throw it, I mean, is it all on us to, to do the reporting? Who's touching the third rail here?
You know, the, if, if you like a recommendation, I'll provide it. But the bottom line is the, when it goes to the town meeting, you, as we've seen in the past, and we've worked on fire station and other things in the past, you, you ought to all be on the same hymn, singing the music to get a project like that for the community because they're, they're difficult. And we've seen that when you try to do difficult decisions.
You get derailed.
You get derailed because everybody's pulling in a different direction.
The real, the problem with the locations is South Chelmsford because that's still kind of like the furthest one away from.
Well, no, the, the problem is nobody wants a longer response time to their neighborhood.
Response time, that's what I'm saying.
That's what it comes down to. And you're, 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 you're constrained by the history of five stations. And that, and, and we've done all the studies. I mean, you, you know, you have the records and the fire chief can best elaborate, but. Well, the issue is going to become, by definition, reducing a station creates a longer response time for someone just by the fact that, you know, you reduce the station and the question becomes what's acceptable.
My other concern, I, I guess in hearing this conversation, is if the other three fire stations are in equally as bad or worse shape, you know, we, are, are we sitting on some serious liability and safety issues right now? Because it certainly seems that way at Engine Two.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the issues at Engine Two are, exist at the other stations. The, the bunk rooms are in by the, by the apparatus and so forth. I mean, that's clearly the case in Engine Five.
And you have the issue of no separation in the bunk rooms because they were designed for, for single gender occupants.
So there's different facets to what we have to look at with the planning.
They were built for called departments, that's the problem. They weren't built for, they weren't built for people to occupy. They were built as called departments. That you come in and a called department, you get out of your vehicle, you get in the fire truck and you take off. That's, that's how they were built.
Right.
Because they were all built in the nineteen fifties and.
It was in the second grade.
Yeah, exactly.
So we'll have to, I mean, that, we'll have to address that, but that's, that's got to be, we, we got to work through that this year. We had a strengthen the leadership presence and support the town's economic development initiative on the crossroads at one twenty-nine. I mean, that's to me a little bit impaired with COVID, but. COVID, but, you know, they've had some great news out there recently with, you know, the restaurants and so forth, and I still think that should be a goal, you know, I don't think we should let up on doing what we can out there. One of the, the items, one of the things that catches me, again, in intending all these, attending all these meetings, is, you know, when it comes to 129, I hear, well, it, it grows and recedes based on the ebb and flow of Boston. You know, whatever happens on 128 and in Boston decides what happens on 129, so if the economy's doing well in the state, then 129 is in demand, but when the economy's not doing well, then 129's not in demand. But then, when I go to some of these economic development meetings, I hear things like, well, we missed the boat, and we could have done better, and, and that leaves me to believe that it's not necessarily all based on the ebb and flow of the economy, that we can have some control, and I think Lisa's proved that we can have some control on 129. So, the fact that we have some wins there, I'd like to capitalize that on that momentum and, and see what we can do to support them as much as possible, because I think the time to get ahead is when you go into tough economic conditions, you know, if you can do something different to attract, and I think bringing in Press Cafe is something different, and, and as an anchor can, you know, we can use as a reason to move to 129. So, what can be done on 129, you know, I think that should still remain a goal, and, and we should be there to support whatever needs to be done on 129 to help that recover. Thoughts?
I'm okay with that.
That's fine.
Right, thoughts, Paul?
No, I, I mean, I think the macro issue is the bigger one, is how are we supporting businesses, and what can we be, continue to be doing during this economic fallout from the COVID coronavirus?
Right.
And I think, you know, so far, we've, we've, you know, I think, there's been a lot done.
There might be a good point to hit the pause button and just say, I think the people in Town Hall have done a great job to support. I mean, what I'm hearing, you know, when, when the governor came out and allowed outside seating, the building department, police, fire, went out to every restaurant, and I, I mean, I've talked to a lot of restaurant owners, they were like, nope, I got everything in order like that, I was ready for business. And then, when we allowed, you know, drinks to go, same thing, this got pushed right through, we adopted it, it was fantastic, you know, that they, because for a lot of these restaurants, they were sitting on forty, fifty thousand dollars of liquor inventory, even more, and that was like an anchor, I mean, around their neck, and the fact that, you know, when that came through and they could do the, the drinks to go, that just freed up that cash flow. And I know with the stay-at-home mentality, a lot of people aren't traveling, some of these restaurant owners are saying, I mean, they're actually doing a little bit more business than they were than, over last August, because so many people are home. You know, then we had the thousand dollar grant that, that we got, and that went out to, how many businesses each got a thousand bucks?
It was, it was thirty-five thousand, thirty-five businesses. I think she's got about twenty-nine at this point, or so.
I mean, that, that, we didn't really publicize that a lot, but there was a thirty-five thousand dollar grant, and a business could send in to Lisa for a thousand bucks just to help them for COVID expenses, and we've paid out twenty-nine thousand of it, which is fantastic. I mean, Rosie's, I had breakfast Saturday, and she said, you know, it was a godsend that she got that. So, I think the Town Hall has done a great job in supporting particularly the restaurants and some of the retail businesses in town, so-
And, and it's still ongoing. I mean, Christina Bruce has done a great job of being the quarterback in that, she's, and we're meeting again tomorrow, because they just came out with new rigs today for outdoor dining, with the heating in, in the winter and the extension of the time, and, and now you can have parties of ten instead of parties of six-
Right.
And, and so forth, and so, in fact, that'll be on your agenda next Monday night, so that we, we can just keep moving with it.
Yeah, I mean, and some of the restaurants I thought never would have survived this are doing good, so, I mean, and so, again, I, I agree, the ongoing, but-
Yeah.
But I think too, that, you know, if we can support 129, because again, we all agree that that was sort of a key to the financial issues of the town, is if we could get that rebranded, reoccupied, it's gonna generate more tax revenue than vacant, so. We had on here, develop and initiate execution of a communication enhancement plan for the town, which I think had to do with social media, more-
Was that just the website redesign?
Yeah, we launched a new website.
Well, it, it was that, but it was also trying to just improve, do, do, do what else, so, so the website was the main thing that was identified for last year, but then I think you did some other things, like, now there's, there's blast, if there's a public hearing announcement or whatever, legal notices, people can get those now off the homepage instead of finding them in the newspaper. So, the, I guess the question would be, is there anything more that we want to do on that or not?
Well, I, I don't know that everything needs to be part of a goal, because that's gonna be part of day-to-day, you know, improvements and operations.
I think there are, you know, big goals and small goals.
Right, yeah, but I don't think we need to have every small goal.
I'm just saying, it was a goal.
I've got bigger things on here that I'd rather chew off, but-
Yeah, I, I think there are a lot more pressing issues in the town, I'm just saying it was a goal, if you want to leave it, and, and then the last thing that was on here, we had a census one that's done. Review the town's current sources and to include taxes, local receipts, revenue sources, fees, state aid, grants with consideration, or priorities of additional ways to grow the town's revenues. I don't know what, and that was the last item on the goals from last year, but I did give some thought to that last one as far as financial goal, but, I don't know, we can go into that, does, I mean-
Do you want to address it now, or do you want to go?
Sure, I mean, I just was thinking that, and I, we'll say, Paul, over the, probably the last three years, you and I have had a few sort of discussions on the budget, you know, when I stood up at a town meeting, asked people not to, I mean, I've always had small issues, I guess, with the budget, and I will say this year, if, if I could summarize what I always wanted to see in the budget was slowing the increase of taxes to the, slowing the rate increase of the tax rates to the residents, coming down on, under the levy limit, not increasing payrolls, and you did it this year. You know, in last night's meeting, you went through it, there's no new hires, you're under the levy limit, and the rate of increase of the property taxes were low, so, you know, it's like the three benchmarks that I kind of use in a general figure you hit last night. And as I look at, you know, I was trying to formulate, and again, this is just me brainstorming today as I was getting ready for tonight's meeting, and I said, well, if we could review town services, and, and I think you do a good job with the trash and all that, but is there any way to, to save money, especially with budget cuts that, I think it's gonna get worse with COVID as we go forward, I don't think it's probably gonna get better until they come up with a vaccine. You know, reduce any new hires to either hiring freeze or so forth. I like coming in below the levy limit, that could become like a longer-term goal. Slowing the rate of increase of the tax bills. To some extent, I'm curious as to, your vision or what the board's vision is of what this town should look like in five years, because I don't think we've ever really talked about, like, in five years down the road, where does this town want to be? What does it want to look like? What type of products, projects do we want to sort of encourage? And I know, to some extent, we don't get to pick and choose the projects that get brought to town, but I do know there is, and I've sat in these meetings where, you know, you can encourage projects that get brought forth, and I can give you an example of one that wasn't encouraged, we had somebody that wanted to talk to us about medical marijuana, and, you know, Chief Spinney's not a huge fan, and we had that meeting, and, but on the flip side, when someone like Hanover came to town, we got invited out to a meeting to meet with them, and, you know, that would probably sent the message that we were encouraging that, but I think we should talk about what we want the town, where we want it to be in five years. You know, last night, we went through the, the capital plans on the budget, and we looked at all these different facilities, you know, that have been sixty-two years old, fifty-nine, fifty-nine, fifty-four, fifty-one, all the way down to the center fire station in five years. Is there a plan as far as, I'm sure you have one, but maybe to make it more public as far as what is the plan, not just for next year, but for five years, three years, five years, ten years down the road, to address the aging buildings in town, so, so we're aware of what that plan is, and, and I guess I, maybe that comes up at the capital planning meetings that you do at the end of the year. So, I, I guess I'm just looking for more financial forecast farther out, you know, three or five years down the road, maybe seven years down the road of where we're gonna be, and, and what the town's gonna look like as far as, you know, what developments we're gonna encourage in town, or in ten years, are we gonna be looking back at our downtown area and have five-story buildings all over the place, or are we gonna be looking more to keep it no more than three, or, and no more large projects, or are we gonna be looking to encourage? So, I guess I want some, a little bit more of that discussion, from both the board, everybody sitting here, and from you.
I don't know that right now, given everything else that's going on in the world, this is a, a time to, to look down, five years down the road, because-
I think it's the best time.
I, I don't know.
You want to set some bars, no, you want to set, you want to talk about what it could be, you know, I mean-
I don't know, Paul, I, I think if you look right now at, a lot of the economists' journals that are coming out, and I, I know Paul looks at them because some of the terms you use, I'm like, oh, I just read that in the, you know, the Wall Street Journal, or I read it in the Financial Times, and, so you're up to date on the stuff, and, you know, I, I, just little clues when we have discussions. You can look out, and there are projections of where the world's gonna be in two years, three years, four years, where the United States growth is gonna be down the road, and I would think that, and, Paul, you're on top of this, I mean, you've said it, oh, there's a recession probably gonna come up between now and two thousand, you were saying that in two thousand nineteen, between now and two thousand twenty-one, we're probably gonna have a recession, and, I mean, we know, generally speaking, where we're probably gonna be, so what's the, the plan? I mean, we've got a lot of really old buildings, so how do we tackle this, you know, down the road, five years out?
We need to focus on, on greener energy, like, we have to figure out how to reinforce some of these buildings, you know, I noticed on like a microeconomic level, Tesla's got like a twenty-seven percent off their battery for, but world batter, I don't know, something, some celebration, probably like a Hallmark holiday, but for batteries. So, but like World Battery Day, so, like, how do we, how do we do that now? Because I'm watching my gas bill go up, we're looking from, you know, a hundred fifty going up to like three twenty.
Do you have a natural gas or gasoline?
Natural gas.
Okay, all right, no, I just wanted to go-
It's exploding.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, if I, if I could, if I could redo my roof with Tesla tiles, I have a friend who just did that, and he is watching his, his energy meter go backwards. He is selling back to the grid, and I think that we need to be paying attention to things that we can do to get away from fossil fuels, to, to just, to just get away and to create some sort of new industry. Like, like this is, this is where we're going to go if we're going to survive, and I think that that's what we should be looking at. I think it's great to be looking at biotech, that's great, absolutely spread that out around the country, but I also think we could be looking at other things and, and ways to get-
So, I, I guess I, I heard two things in what you said. I heard what you ended with, which is, should we collectively be looking at where the future trends are going in our area, in the world economically, and how do we plan for that within Chelmsford? What, what is Chelmsford gonna look like under that knowledge, right? The other thing I heard, I think, was more nearer term, when you're talking about services and hires and the levy limit and slowing the rate of growth, which is, should we be having earlier conversations on like fiscal twenty-one budget strategy? I don't, I want to just make sure I'm hearing this right.
We're already in twenty-one, it'd be twenty-two.
Fiscal twenty-two, so-
Yeah, no, I, I-
And I do think they're intertwined to some degree.
I, I know, but I just want to make sure I'm under, because you went through a long list of stuff, so-
I know.
Were those kind of the two things you're, you're talking about, or?
Well, so, yeah, and to, to get an idea of roughly two thousand twenty-two, because, I mean, I'm someone who thinks, you know, look out two years, what are the, what, where could we be? What's the spectrum of situation we could be in, and, and that's why I think, you know, last October, I brought up, you know, what would it look like if we took the budget of our variable revenues and dropped it ten percent, what would the town do, right? And then, lo and behold, March came, and it happened, and then, you know, and-
But it wasn't ten percent, Ken, the, the budget's a hundred and thirty-eight million dollars, ten percent's thirteen point eight million dollars. We're talking three million dollars.
No, no, but it's, it was ten percent of, property taxes aren't gonna change, those aren't gonna fall off, you get your property taxes, it's ten percent of the excise, meal tax, I mean, the variable tax rates, you know what I mean, like-
You, 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 you're roughly thirty-eight million dollars.
So, so are there scenarios that we should be looking at? Like, I, there was a, granted, it was related to COVID, but one of the nearby towns had an article in the paper where they had, like, two or three different scenarios that they brought forward, saying depending which way the town wanted to go, or which way state aid fell out, you know, here's some options. And I don't know if, if scenario, if, if looking at a couple of different scenarios would address what you're saying in terms of, like, what are the trade-offs with town services, or hires, or levy limit, or, is, is part of like the near-term budget strategy or approach, if, if we had some earlier, maybe they're not totally quantified, but some earlier discussions on that before, like, the tri-board meeting, and then all of a sudden, we have to freeze it in two weeks for town meeting? I don't want to speak for you, but that's, I, I, I'm just, I'm trying to understand where we want to go with the near-term, and then with this longer-term thought that you had about where will the town be in five years?
Well, I mean, we can talk about where I want to go with it when we get into it, but I, I would like to know, in the next year to eighteen months, worst case, best case, where we're gonna be. And then, five years down the road, what this town, what we want the town to look like as far as, do we want it to be, the downtown area to be more retail, do you want development, you know, what, what type of projects are gonna be encouraged or discouraged, or?
So, you guys are asking to plan and to make outlines for different possibilities of different futures? Oh, I love you.
With all due respect, you're not the planning board. The Board of Selectmen don't determine the, whether the downtown has a restaurant and a six-story office building behind it or not. That's the planning board, and, and I've often said to people, you know, you, the, the local government, this goes back to my earlier comment, local government in, in Chelmsford, in most towns in Massachusetts, is a, you know, is a Byzantine type of structure. We can't determine what the future of downtown is, and in fact, when, when, when something comes into downtown, such as the Griss Mill, that didn't come before the Board of Selectmen, it goes before the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board.
They're more of a conduit than we are.
Right, I mean, all you, yeah, all you can do is, is you can express preference, or you could put bylaws forth, so forth, but, again, the master plan goes to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board is the board, and, and oftentimes, I say this to people, oh, you want to be concerned about the development of the town of Chelmsford, you ought to try to serve on the Planning Board. The Selectmen don't appoint the Planning Board, we don't, you know, we're not the, we're not the town planners.
So, if you bring it back into the financial and the budgeting, what would make sense?
So, I guess, from a budgeting standpoint, I would, I would like to know, worst case, best case, where you think we're gonna end up in the next eighteen months, you know, if we don't get any meals tax pushed through, and, you know, that, that'd be worst case, right, if they, if they don't unfreeze the meals tax and, and state aid disappears.
Let me make this clear on the meals tax. What, what they did on the meals tax is they deferred the payments until April of twenty twenty-one. There's no way, and that I foresee, that the state is gonna take money that was collected by a local option meals tax and not give it back to the community, okay? And I think what Dowling was trying to express last night is it's hard to get a handle on what that number is if they keep pushing the goal line out in terms of when they gotta make those payments for those smaller businesses, and I think that's what she was trying to convey, and may have been not the clearest message last night.
So, so to that end-
Right, but to that end, but-
So, what I'm wondering is, if they, if they push the goal line out another year-
Yeah.
And-
It's, it's a six hundred thousand dollar revenue source out of a hundred and thirty-eight million dollar budget, so it, it, it-
That's an engine.
No, it's not an engine, because of the six, of the six hundred thousand, maybe half of it is smaller businesses that get the exemption, the, the larger businesses probably didn't get the exemption, we don't know, we haven't, they, they only distribute those revenues quarterly. We, we, we won't see until two, two weeks from now, the, the first quarter distribution of what that is, so then we'll have some sense of, perhaps, of, of what mac, what portion of Chelmsford is tied to larger versus smaller employers in terms of meals tax.
So, do you not, in your mind-
Yeah.
As you run the town, do you not, do you look at it and say, well, I'm just-
I manage the town, I don't run the town.
Who does run the town?
No, the town runs, different people have, 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 have responsibility of the town.
Oh, I'm sorry.
As you do that, do you look at it and say, well, I'm just gonna take this as a year-by-year, eighteen month by eighteen month, let me see what's coming in on forecast, what's going out, or do you, in your mind, have an idea what we're gonna look like in three years?
I don't think anybody has an idea. The state legislature doesn't have a budget because they don't know what we're gonna look like over the next nine months, never mind the next three years.
Your approach is just deal with it as it gets-
It's not my approach, it's my reality. Everybody would like to do, everyone would like to do five and ten-year planning, and we do it very effectively for capital and, and school facilities, but, but-
Paul, I'm just trying to understand how it works, that's all.
But I'm just saying, yeah, basically how it works is, is we're dependent in terms of the margins. Because, and, and I'll go, I'll do this again. We run a $138 million budget, much like the federal and state budget. Of that 137 million, there's only a portion of it that's discretionary.
So can I cut you guys off because you're going around and.
No, no, but I'm trying to, I'm.
No, no, I, no, but it's the same thing over and over again. So my understanding of the select board is that a part of what we do is we, we, we ask questions and we, we see where we can go. We try to determine the course of action, you know, and get things moving. So we can say, let's, what, what is this? And we get to ask, we get to ask what the plans are. What are the plans? What is the best case scenario? What is the worst case scenario? I'm not asking for a ream of paper in detail, but I think what we're all looking at is, what are the possibilities? What is next? We're asking essential questions that help determine how we react to things as opposed to sitting back and waiting for the benevolent state legislature to, you know, wave their magic wand and bestow funds upon us. Like, like what is our plan? What are we doing? What, what are the goals we have? Are they big? Are they small? If, if we can't tackle a big one, can we get rid of some of the small ones? Like, like what are the things that we need to do? Where do we see this going? Worst case scenario, we're all dead next year. Best case scenario, there's a vaccine in like, I don't know, March. And maybe it's easy enough to produce that we get a fully vaccinated or mostly vaccinated population in a year. That would be amazing. But what does that look like? Where are we going? Which direction are we heading in? And so, so I think, I think that these are perfectly reasonable questions. And, and I think, I think that, that the lack of vision and, and the, the lack of willingness to, to, to look at possibilities and to set goals and to say, yes, this is what things happen. I think, I think when you look at what economists, economists say and, and what people who, who control things and, and have larger stakes in things do is when things are bad, they look at where they can leverage whatever resources they have to get a little bit more, to, to, to gain a little bit of control, to see what they can manage. And, and there's that constant planning. There's that constant looking at the possibilities and seeing where the directions are to go. And, I mean, if we can't ask these questions and we can't say, these are the directions we want to go in, like what is, what is even the point of having a goal session? We could just go back to rubber stamping Christmas tree stamps and liquor licenses. I mean, you know.
So you're looking for the conversation earlier? So there's an opportunity to have a conversation?
So that there's an opportunity when something comes to say, gosh, we thought about this and maybe we could go in this direction.
The reason why I'm looking for the conversation is I don't want to be reactionary in the approach when stuff like sewer capacity pops up or a fire station that's in dire need.
These are huge.
I mean, we have, I'm trying to count them. It looks like 24 buildings that you gave us a list last night that are, you know, I think the average life. I mean, we got McKay Library at 120 years old. We got the town, the town hall at 140 years old. Are any of those in, is there a project capital plan in place that says, okay, we, we do have some issues with these other things? And here's where we're going to address them, two years down the road, five years down the road, 10 years down the road? Or do we just?
No, we have a, we have a five year facilities plan and a 10 year school building plan.
Okay.
The fact that the town offices is over 100 years old doesn't mean it's going to the wrecking ball.
No, I agree.
And so I don't, I don't necessarily agree that age determines situation, but.
No, we've done a great job keeping up Town Hall. I'm just.
I, I guess, I guess I'm, I'm hearing a dichotomy. On the other hand, you want to go below the levy limit and, and, and keep the tax rate low. But on the other hand, we want to invest all in infrastructure. Those aren't compatible.
That's not what I just said.
They are.
No, but, but you asked, you asked Virginia, Virginia gave her thoughts on what you had said earlier. I'm giving you my thoughts on what I heard, what you said earlier. What I hear earlier is, geez, Paul, we're thrilled that the tax levies come in below levy limit and the, and the tax increase is small. But on the other hand, I'm concerned that we need to invest in all these facilities and infrastructure and what's the plan for doing so? Well, those are mutually exclusive. You can't do, of course they are.
No, they're not.
You cannot, let me finish, let me finish. We've heard from the schools that they want a new school facility, okay? And they've applied for the last four or five years. That's a significant infrastructure and that's going to blow the, the tax rate out of the water from any of these other things that we talk about. That's one project. And now we want to attack fire stations and we want to talk fire apparatus and we want to talk aging buildings and, and so forth. Look, folks, you know, the approach I've had for 14 years is live within two and a half, but be responsible for our infrastructure. And as I said last night, I think that paid dividends when it came down to this COVID emergency and being able to operate particularly in the schools with the technology infrastructure and the air quality infrastructure and so forth that we've done. And again, and that's why I'm bringing forward at this time of a crisis, the investment in the Parker School Cafeteria and the McCarthy Auditorium and, and the, the North Fire Station. And why I mentioned last night that we've got issues with some things that, that the school committee might not even stand behind. But when someone goes out there and I get the phone call in July saying, we can't have a summer youth basketball program because the condition of the high school tennis courts and basketball courts is deplorable. My job is to ring the bell. And I rang the bell on the sewer thing a year ago. And you know that. And, and, and right now we're not in a crisis. We are not in that crisis that the Board of Health suggested where we'd have to not allow any connections and shut everything down. And so, you know, so I think, you know, we're ahead of the curve. Look at what's happening in other towns with, with decrepit buildings in terms of what's happening in, in, in what's going forward. And so what, what I'm saying is, is when you ask me an opinion on the, on the economy and I tell you that, hey, look, no one knows what's going to happen. And as I said last night, all bets are off. If we go into another shutdown come November, December because of COVID, then, then, then basically all bets are off the table. That's a reality. It may not be pleasant, but that's an economic reality. And because of that reality, the state hasn't done its budget. That's the reality that we have, folks, in dealing with this. And so when you say to me, hey, can you give me a financial forecast that's going to go this way or that way? Sure, we can do anything on paper and a piece of paper. But the one thing I'll point out with, to you, and I've done this in the past, is we deal with employees and employee morale. And to sit there and issue a report that says these positions and these things are going to be cut if it may not come to pass, is going to kill your employee morale. And I have a responsibility as a manager to maintain that morale. Because maybe what we should do, if the answer to your question is, maybe we should get a benchmark study and look at the staffing levels in Chelmsford compared to our comparable towns of our size and how many people we have in the various positions and offices. And that'll give you the measurement, are we overloaded and things could be done more efficiently? How many people do we have in our Selectmen's Office versus, versus the town of Tewksbury or the town of Westford or the town of Barica? How many people do we have working DPW? How many police officers do we have in the streets? How many firefighters? How many school teachers? That'll give us an indication and, and that's what you want if you want to measure efficiencies and productivity. And my final frustration in all of this is the biggest spending thing, and I'll go back to this, the biggest department in this town is the school department. Okay? We don't have control over that. And I sit here and get hammered annually on questions like, why did you add this position? When the schools add eight and 10 and 12 physicians per year? And it goes by the board. And to go to the final point about budgets, how much wiggle room you have in a budget? If we do nothing, what do you think we really have for discretionary spending in the budget? Take away the debt service. Take away, you know, the basic things that you need to operate the buildings and departments. Like most state and federal governments, of that $138 million, you probably have a discretionary amount of $10 to $20 million that you can actually do something about. Because we got to pay middlesex. We got to pay health insurance. We got to pay, you know, we got to pay employees. We got to pay our debt service. And so if, if you sit here and you say to me, why do I hold these opinions? It's because I've done this job for 30 years and I've done this job in this town for 14 years. And I kind of know what the realities are and what the pitfalls are. And, and having sat through the Great Recession and saw what happened when positions were cut and so forth, you don't want to take that lightly of coming in here and saying, well, you know, if these, if this situation happens, we're going to have to let these people go.
Paul, I think, you know.
So I think the bottom line is in terms of a goal thing, I suggest that you, that the town implement a benchmark survey. Find out how is Chelmsford staff and also at the same time while you're doing it, why not look about how we compensate people compared to other towns? And, and maybe we can inform the community as to how the town of government is run. Because I'm convinced that at the end of the day, no matter what you have for a tax bill, nobody's happy when it goes up. If people would complain if their tax bill was $5,000, they're going to complain just as much if it was $8,000. And they probably complain just as much if it was $3,400. Because the notion is the property tax is a tangible tax that's in front of you that you see quarterly as opposed to your income tax or your sales tax, which is sort of more of a hidden tax that you, that one doesn't see. So to go to your goal, what I suggest is put a goal of a benchmark analysis. Let's benchmark and then let's be able to evaluate, given the number of road miles we have, given the number of population, how are we doing in terms of staffing of police, fire, DPW, town offices? And perhaps even include the schools in terms of students and a number of faculty? That'll give you the analysis. All I can tell you is in my, in my sense, and I've said this repeatedly in the past, I'm impressed every day that we're able to do what we do with the resources that we have in this community. And I think, and I think perhaps maybe it's time to quantify that and do the benchmark analysis. I think the last one that was done in this town was probably before my time. And so it's got to be 15, 18 years ago. And let's get data and, and document for folks, what is it that we have as a community?
Paul, I think you went like, but past what I was asking for. Because when I talk about the buildings, I'm not, I'm not asking you to go and knock down buildings and put up new buildings. I just want to make sure that there's, like, we don't get surprised on any building down the road. Like, if you came back and said, we didn't, like, one of the items you said was you've been doing it for 14 years in your senses and you know. And I'm just asking you to share that knowledge with us. You know, if you know the Chelmsford High School or, don't take that one, because you picked the high school up. But if you said, you know, yeah, we need to do some repairs at this fire station or that fire station. The Chelmsford Country Club's doing great. There's nothing we got to do there. That's fine by me. I just want an update on where we're at so that someone, you can say to me, yep, we looked at that building and it's good to go for the next 10 years. You know, I'm not looking to knock down buildings and, and come up with a replacement plan. I just want to make sure that, that, that we're safe and that we're not going to get surprised with the building that has a roof cave in or.
But all I'm saying is, Ken, that, that we haven't had those things. And I think we have an effective capital plan that's demonstrated that preparedness.
So, so maybe.
So I, so I think we, we can give you that.
I can't go, I mean, I can't go to every meeting that the town has. So maybe you come and say, well, here is the 10 year capital plan.
It's a five year.
It's a five year. And we distribute that, we distribute that. And it's printed every year in the, in the book for town meeting. We, you know, we, we have John Souza come in and go over that plan. But the focus is always on the immediate year.
The focus is always on the current fiscal year. So maybe if we spend a little more time on the long, what's in the longer term queue? And even year to year, things get pushed out.
Yeah, because, why? Why do they get pushed out? We don't have enough money.
Yeah, so.
And even on the budget side, I'm not, I'm not asking you to go into the full detail of, oh, if we drop 20 million off the budget, I'm going to go through this department and all the way down. What I'm wondering is, how bad could the budget get if, like, what, what items in the budget for revenue could dry up, get withheld, go away? And, and I guess I'm just wondering like.
How long can we function?
That's why you have a stabilization fund.
Yep.
To, to get you through the hiccups.
Yep.
And right now, we're, we're drawing upon that. But I don't know, and again, if, if, of the town's employees, more than half to two thirds of them are in the school department. I guess we can make the request of the school committee to give that report. I can't produce that report.
Right.
They have autonomy. It's very clear, they have budget autonomy.
That's part, so some of that is also part of, so the, the multi-year plan you're asking for is also part of the reaccreditation process that schools go through. And it's a very in-depth self-study that I think would apply well in many other situations because everything is looked at and examined down to a very fine level. And a lot of places do not do that, like ever. There is no self-reflection. And so I think what I'm asking for is not how many people can you cut and who are they? But I'm asking, what are the possibilities? Like, let's say level, good. Like, I want to see what the outlines are. I want to know, I want some sense of plans. I want, and, and some of this has to do, Paul, with some kind of hope and looking forward and seeing what the vision is because what do we want to do in five years? Do we want to still be sitting here going, well, like, what are we doing? Like, what, what are we doing? I, I.
So what would be in that plan, Emily? What is it that you'd want to see in this document that would tell you what we were doing? Can you be more specific?
I would love a list of the things that need to be done. I would love a list of, you know, big goals. I want to see what, I, I want to see what the possible courses of action are.
For what? Possible action, courses of action for what?
Where we can put money into infrastructure, where, where the choices are. Like, what are the tiers of, of choices we have in infrastructure? Like, I want, uh, I want it to look, so, so when you talk about reducing a budget and planning without knowing that it might come back to us, you can plan where to put that money. You can economize briefly to focus on something and build that up and then go. I, I want to know where you think we could possibly invest, if we can find the money. And I want to know where we can leverage any resources we can to get ahead of some of the curves that are coming. I want, I want to be more efficient. I want, I want to get off fossil fuels. I want to see what the plans are for needing to be outside and socially distanced and away from each other for another year or year and a half while we wait for, you know, proper clinical trials to go through 18 vaccines. Like I said, worst case scenario, we're all dead next year. So best case scenario, we're not all dead. There's a recovery. What are we doing with the money? Like, what, what are our plans? What do we want to do? Where are we going? And, and I, I want those outlines. I, you know, and when I, when I ask.
I don't know how we, how we can go that, that deep into it.
But not even like that, but like, what are the bigger? It's like the small, medium and big rocks. What can you move when you have like a little bit of money to get rid of something or to move something or to do a project?
That conflicts, Emily, with if we have a little bit of money, we're going to lower the property tax limit.
No, we're not. No, because you have to improve, because no.
Well, they tell, talk to the gentleman to your right.
No, we're not. And we're not giving everyone a free pizza in, in redos or whatever these nonsense ideas are because there are things that we have to get done. Like, like giving everybody 20 bucks is not useful. Useful is putting it into the pot and seeing what we can do with that money. What are the projects that we can spend with some of this? So, so, yeah, so we're, we're, we're functioning at a slightly lower budget. Are we economizing anything that we can put towards something to get a project off the table? To get some kind of small, medium, moderate goal taken care of so that we can see a little bit of progress? Because I see a giant list of projects. I see a giant list of improvements to be made.
So what I can do is, I mean.
I'd like those to be articulated because I'm curious as to what they are.
I think, I think I'll go re-watch this meeting on video afterwards and, and then put some pen to ink and see if I can come up with a.
Because I'd almost say, oh, Emily, maybe our, our responsibility to the next generation is not to leave them with the unfunded liabilities that we're handing them today.
Oh, you mean that, that got handed to me by the previous generations?
By the, by the, by the unfunded pension obligation, the unfunded OPEB obligation.
Yes, yes, I am absolutely furious that those same people don't want to pay taxes now because they're done with things. Yeah, no, I know, they used up the infrastructure. Yeah, don't get me started.
My whole point is those liabilities are greater than our operating budget.
Because trickle down economics doesn't work. So what I want to know is when we can find a little bit of economization, when we can see one of these projects that was not done in the 80s or the 70s or the 90s or during the dot com bubble, I want to know what we can ship away at. I want a list of the projects that can be done.
I mean, I think what Paul's saying though is.
Well, adding to the project, why don't you just pay down the unfunded liability that you leave in the next generation? Let them take care of it. Because otherwise you're not going to, you're not going to, you're going to saddle them. You're going to, just, what do you think the federal government's doing? We're incurring debt, debt, debt. Somebody's going to pay for it at some point in time, but it's like, we'll leave that, we'll leave that for another time.
I know what they're doing. I also know where the money is being wasted and I know where all the waste came from. I think we all do.
So for the purposes of a goal discussion, are we okay with Ken taking a pass at putting pen to paper something?
Or, Paul, should we just build nothing and just pay for all the retirements that nobody funded while they were actually working? that nobody funded while they were actually working and contributing to society?
Maybe what I can do is, maybe I can set up a time with you and sit down with you and come up with something that we can agree on as a, as a financial goal and...
I think it's got to be all of us agreeing.
But we can bring it back.
Right, just take, take a pass at articulating based on this discussion and come back with it.
Even if, even if the outcome is that the goal is status quo, but just more transparent, because I have a feeling a lot of what you know is in your head.
But it's not in my head, it's in the plans. There's a book that shows the five-year capital plan. There's a ten-year school capital plan. The, the school department paid $200,000 for a school facilities plan. Those plans exist.
I think what I'm looking for is the stewardship, sustainability, innovation, adaptability, and creativity. That's what I'm looking for, but I don't know that we actually have those values.
All right.
I, I'd like to just leave it that you'll go offline and work something, so, because I know Pat has a list. I still have some things I want to talk about.
One on my list that's gone, that we've done yet so far, yes.
All right, I'm done, so...
Yeah, that, I've only, we've only gotten one off my list.
Okay.
You want me to go to the next one?
Sure.
The next one is the Warren Pole Farm. I attended one of the meetings on, on Saturday with the interested parties, and quite frankly, I think that's going to be a little harder to, to make everybody happy than what we maybe originally thought. So I'll be interested in, in, in your thoughts on how that goes forward, you know, what our options are there, including the, the conservation restriction that we'll have to put on it. You know, I know sometimes that runs into some issues, too. What could happen with it, how it's going to be sustained, if it's going to be able to generate any revenue or, or at least, you know, sustain itself. So, I mean, that's just a couple of the thoughts.
So what is, what's the goal around it?
What to do next with the, with the Warren Pole Farm, I guess, is the...
And there's a committee for that.
Well, no, they go out of existence in, in next week.
Right, they're just making a rec, an initial recommendation, right?
Right. So, I mean, I think there's going to be some, some work to get that, that moved.
What would you suggest, Pat?
I, I don't know. I mean, I'm...
So you're looking for, like, some type of plan and recommendation for Warren Pole Farm?
Yes, right.
Excellent.
Beautiful piece of land.
My, my next one is, is one that's, that's bugged me for a couple of years, and it's not directly you, but it's the, on the website, the committees, boards, and committees. That hasn't been updated or accurate, and I think other people here have mentioned that, too, that, you know, it's, it's, it's burdensome to try to figure out who's on a committee, when their terms are up, and information on how to get in touch with, with some of them. Like I said, I, you know, I don't know if that's directly yours, but they've tried a couple of options and nothing seems to have worked.
That old link is still active. That was my problem. I had it bookmarked, and that's what I keep going to, and it's way out of date, and it's not supposed to be active anymore.
Right.
I wasn't going through the website where you wind up with a Word document that has everybody's contact information in it.
And the reason for that is that we cannot find a software provider to generate what, what should be a simple list. It's not been for lack of trying. You just had, we've been going on two years trying to...
We should at least disconnect the old link if there's a way to do that.
And I thought we had, because you said, go through the website.
No, I can still go to it through my bookmarks.
But you're not going through the website, right? You're going through a bookmark. Okay. All right, I'll just, have them disconnect the bookmark.
I mean, you know, surely other communities must have something that they feel works. I mean, I haven't, maybe I should look at other communities and make a suggestion on who we could steal from or whatever, but...
Like I said, there are, there are certainly vendors out there who provide software to municipalities on this. We've, we've looked high and low. We'll continue to do it, but it's not for a lack of want. It's just, we haven't been able to identify that, a vendor who can provide something that indicates when your term expires. Yeah, you, you know, it, it sounds ridiculous and frustrating. We're as frustrated as you are, which is why we put this paper list up on the website, so that people could actually see what the contact information are and who's on the committee. Anyway, no, it's, it's...
And, and my, and my last one is more of a quality of life and, you know, it's type of issue. Some kind of plan. We don't know how long we're going to be under the situation that we're under. I know people miss a lot of the events that we have, like, you know, like, we're probably going to miss Winterfest this year. We're going to miss the holiday prelude this year. We missed the Fourth of July. We missed Memorial Day. We don't know yet about Veterans Day. If there's going to be some way that we can, you know, do something to, to regenerate those and on a limited basis, and I don't know what that's going to be, like I said, I mean, I don't know if anybody has any, any thoughts on that, but, you know, I think that has to do, like you talking about, you know, the morale within town hall, well, you know, same thing with morale, morale with the whole town, when, when we can't do some of these things that, that people are used to doing to, to socialize. Anyway, I, I don't know if it's even reasonable to, to do anything like that, but something I've been thinking about. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on...
Can you give, can you give an example, like, so like for Veterans Day, we had the video. Is that what you think, like...
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't know how we would, how we would...
I'm just trying to understand what you're trying to address. So the community events have all been shut down, basically, so...
Yeah, if there's some, you know, if we, if we're still under the same restrictions next year, or even if they're lifted a little bit, how do we, how do we, you know, do something like that on a limited basis? How do we have a parade on a...
Well, like last year, they had the holiday stroll. So is there a way this year you could do a, a mask-required holiday stroll where you have police officers around the center to stop traffic, so people could walk around the center, go to different restaurants, go to the different stores with masks on, stay six feet apart, no more than six people at a table in a restaurant, but just make it a day? So if you're out in a, you know, if you're out doing the holiday stroll, you can see people you haven't seen, wear a mask, say hi to them, spend some time together, and just get into the festivities of the season, but COVID-compliant.
Yeah, I mean, and, and maybe that is part of the issue, is you, you know, instead of a Fourth of July, which is just the country fair, on the third, and end of parade on the fourth, maybe it's a, a week-long celebration and so that things can be more socially distanced. I, I don't know. I mean, I've, you know, I don't know, but I just know that...
If you said that, Pat, you know, thinking of the holiday stroll last year, you know, the, the stores were open, you know, as long as they're following the COVID-compliant rules of you got to have a face mask when you go in, stay six feet apart in lines, things like that, you still could have a holiday stroll. You had a few more police around, around the center to stop traffic and direct traffic and keep, you know, and keep some sort of sanity, because what I find is if someone has a complaint about somebody not wearing a mask, who's going to enforce it and who's around to, I don't know if that's doable, but just, I hear what you're saying. I'm just trying to think logistically how you go about having something like...
Right, and, and I don't know either. Yeah, I mean, this all came upon us so quickly, and everybody, I think, adapted pretty, pretty well. But I, I know that, you know, we don't want to go too long without having people be able to interact with each other in, at some level, in some way.
I mean, I don't know if you could do like a, a holiday prelude tree lighting where it's fenced off and to get in, you got to have a mask on, you have to keep a mask on.
And then, but then you'd have to limit...
What do you do there? You can't do, can't take pictures with Santa. You can't, you can't get on a hayride. You can't get on a tractor ride.
You could do a picture with Santa, you just have to stand six feet in front of him. No, no, seriously, you could.
Photoshop.
I mean, because it then becomes the year that you almost didn't have a Santa, right? You know what I mean, like...
We're kind of looking at that with Halloween, though, which is much closer. And speaking of, I'm getting questions about that.
Yeah, we're all getting tons of questions.
Yeah, what are we going to do about that?
There was a call with the MMA and the Lieutenant Governor today, and she still had no guidance. And it's, she was vague as to whether the Board of Health would put guidance. And she, in talking to Chief Spinney, you know, he, he wants to do something that we don't have to then go back and, and rescind a week or two later. So we may, he, he's almost requesting that we push it off to your, one week to your first meeting in October, as opposed to this coming Monday night, in the hopes that we can get some clarity, because really what's going to happen is it's going to be like the school cancellation issues.
Right.
He wants to talk to the neighboring chiefs in terms of what are they in, in their communities doing, so that you don't have a, a consequence of, oh, well, you know, it's a Saturday night Halloween. Oh, well, they, they cancel Halloween and LOL, so all these people are going to come over into North Chelmsford. You know, that, that, you know, or, you know, or Barriker into, you know, you know...
Westford into Chelmsford.
Any other town that's canceled that comes into our town, because you kept it. Exactly, and so, and so I think what he wants to do is, in, in, in talking to the Board of Health and, and from the state, is what are the guidelines? Because all we've seen at this point are the major ones are canceled. You're not going to Salem this year, or you can go to Salem, but you're not going to see anything in Salem in terms of the traditional Halloween focus. But they haven't gotten down to the micro level of, well, what does it do for individual communities in terms of, for treating, in terms of social distancing and the idea of avoiding the spread? So, so again, I, I think, I think there needs to be sort of a regional plan because of the concerns of, of a Saturday night event with other towns.
I had a couple more. You want me to...
Well, so, Pat, are you all set?
Yeah, that's, that's all I could do, yeah.
So I, I know that in general, we support the committees we appoint and things like that. I didn't know if there was anything specific we might want to call out, and I thought of this when you said age-friendly. We have this new racial equity, diversity, and inclusion committee. And so is there anything that we want to call out in terms of just, like, heightening our awareness to support that? Or do we just let that process take care of itself? I mean, we're not going to step in the middle of it, but...
I actually had that on, on my list as kind of a select board goal, that, that we would monitor what they're, what they're doing, what they're talking about, see what actions we need to take to support them.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so you, okay.
As the Board, as a Board, should we do a review of our committees to make sure there's? Because I, I find we're fighting like crazy to keep our committees full.
Well...
Do any consolidation of committees or...
Can we just go back to the, the RAC committee? I've had a couple of comments from people. So ordinarily, all of our addresses and phone numbers are public record. Because some of these people are not elected officials, and this is a very specific committee that is coming out of some very specific issues. Some of the folks do not necessarily feel comfortable with their names and phone numbers and addresses made public, especially if they've had any kinds of issues in the past. So I was wondering if we could waive that requirement.
Already public in the forums, but if they, I don't, I really don't feel strongly one way or the other if they just list the name.
Their applications are public.
Right, but, you know, we're...
I mean, we can issue them town email addresses and then just identify the person and provide an email address. But the problem is that some portion of the population, it does, doesn't use email. And that's why we've always provided a telephone number, but if you don't want to do that, we, let us know. We, we, we can do that, but...
If a resident wants to talk to somebody on the committee and call them and give them ideas or try to, I mean, you got to know who to reach out to.
Or maybe the committee could designate somebody as, or a set of people who don't mind having their phone numbers out there.
I just wanted to put that out there for the people who are rightfully nervous. You know, I mean, there are some people who've had some negative experiences who are concerned, so...
If they're scheduling their first meeting, my suggestion would be, maybe they talk about it and tell us how they want to handle it.
Yeah.
Okay, so the, I, I had, I, I gave you guys page four and five of the briefing that we received in July from the Vision and Values Committee. And so I just had a, I wanted to do two things. I have a goal that I wrote that just says, implement the recommendations of the Vision and Values Committee. So I know they're going to report it to the town meeting, but then we talked about posting the statements on the website and in municipal buildings. And then I don't know if we want to go any further with it. So we had, the committee had a general recommendation about when the town boards and committees are conducting their goal and strategic planning, they do it in alignment. And we're doing goal planning right now, so if you flip the page to page four, my next question would be, is there anything from this that we haven't already addressed that we should incorporate into our goals for this year? Not necessarily in these words, but for example, you mentioned committees, Ken, and Pat, you mentioned community events. Well, what we're really getting at is trying to foster that civic and community engagement, right? That, that falls into one of those, and we've talked about stewardship and budget and fiscal responsibility. So some of this, I think, is going to flow over into our code of conduct discussion. But I just wanted to sanity check, is there anything else that we want to put forward besides to just implement the basic recommendations? And I, I think we, I think even the conversation we had about the macro issues and the infrastructure, I mean, that's kind of getting at some of the, being responsive to the environment that we're in and trying to plan for it. So right now, I feel comfortable, but I just wanted to head check.
Yeah, I didn't think this was really a basic list. To me, this seemed pretty thorough, so I, maybe that's not.
So we're okay with implementing the recommendations? Yeah. They're not that hard, but...
No, they're not. Yeah, I thought we voted on that to do that.
Okay. And then Ken brought up the age-friendly. Do you think there's anything specific in that area, Paul? Or do we just let that come forward as it comes forward?
They're supposed, they're close to finalizing their report of, and they, they... So I imagine we'll, we'll see something, you know, certainly before the end of the calendar year, and maybe even sooner, probably even, you know, October, November timeframe in terms of...
That's, that's not a committee appointed by this board, though, right?
No, I, I, I believe, I think I appointed them, but it's, it's, but it's, you know, clearly, it's, it's that macro issue about, you know, livable for all ages in the community, and then they're going to have action items that flow from that, which, some of which will go to town meeting, I would anticipate.
So you, we don't need to call out anything individually for that right now?
No, but I, but I think, I think somewhat to the, to the Diversity and Inclusion Committee, I think the whole point is, is, you know, we ought to look to support and, and implement the, the age-friendly initiative, and, and, you know, some of those things have already started. I mean, the park at Wethen Street and North Road is, came from the age-friendly initiative.
Okay. That's all I had.
Do you have anything else on your list?
No, I just wanted ways to look ahead.
All right, you're good.
Thanks.
All right, so we'll...
So, I mean, as far as, I did have, you know, one more, as far as us, the select board, is obviously since we have a new name, to update our policies to reflect that new name. And I have a couple of this, you know, minor changes that, you know, I'd like to bring forward on that. So maybe, maybe say at one of our November meetings, like, I'd be willing to do that, to get that ready. And I'd like to put something in there. I'd like to kind of talk about town council communication.
I'm sorry, Pat, talk about what?
Town council, communicating with town council. When we appointed town council, you know, I remember that we said, if any of us wanted to talk to town council, we had to go through you, but it seems that some members of the community, some residents, feel they have the authority to do that directly, and I think we need to have some...
Residents in the community go to town council?
Well, we got an email this week from one of, she sent it right to Paul.
Well, I've seen two in the past week.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
I figured that they had some sort of permission, like, I'm...
Well, even if, I don't think they should, you know, it should come through either, either the town manager or the chair.
Can we bill for it, then?
We'll get, I'm sure we're going to get billed for those.
It's $200 an hour, so if you want to use town council...
But how do you stop a resident from sending an email to the town?
Send them a bill.
You can't stop them, but in fairness to Paul Haverty, he called me first thing Monday morning and said, you know, I got this email that you've been copying on over the weekend, you know, how do, you know, how do we respond to it? So I, I, you know, I, I want to assure you that Paul just doesn't go off and spend, you know, legal hours, just, you know, without, you know...
I mean, if you, you can make it a policy, but I don't know how you require residents to comply to that.
Send a bill with their taxes.
Well, I mean, that's, that's good to know, that before Paul does anything on it, that he does. But, but even so, I think it should, they should, they shouldn't have, you know, it shouldn't go that way. I mean, you should have known, or you should have known that it was going before it was...
I agree, but what will you do?
I don't know, maybe we just publicize it or something, I don't know. I mean, how do they know, how do they know how to get ahold of town council?
I mean, it's, it's a, I mean, honestly, it's, it's not hard to find.
Well, but that doesn't make it right that, you know...
And I think in that case, there's been communicate between the two of them over planning board issues. That's probably how we... planning board issues. That's probably how he has his email address.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a.
Yeah, I was thinking of the other one.
Yeah, there was a matter that came up a couple of years back, which you can probably correct upon.
So anyway, it's just, it's just something that, you know.
Because we don't put town council's email out there. So.
There was a Warren Poll question that went directly to him, too.
Right, yes.
But I think of a resident, I don't know how the resident get their, maybe they call his office, say, can I have his email address? And they give it out. I mean, that's easy.
It's on his office's website.
It is.
Yeah, it's on the office's website probably, too.
Right, yeah, but I'm just, it's, it's just, you know.
And the firm does work in the area. I've encountered members of their firm doing other things, like.
But as long as Paul Havery is calling town manager and saying, I got this, what do you want me to do? I mean, you can't, I'm comfortable with that. I really can't stop a resident from, I agree with you, it shouldn't be done, but how do you, you can't, you want to put out an edict and forebode it?
Well, I mean, I guess if I'm the resident, then, you know, I mean, yeah, I don't know how we inform them that they, that's not the protocol to use. You know, they need to follow that, the protocol that we have in place. So if they never get a response, are they going to say, oh, this town council is no good because they don't ever respond to my emails? You know, it's kind of a double-edged sword that way. But anyway, it's just something that came up, you know, twice in the past week, and I just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, it doesn't sit well. I'm not sure what to do about it.
Okay.
All right, so we'll all sort of depart, write these up, and come back? Is that the process we want to do?
Are you taking the pass at writing them up?
Do you want me to take a pass at writing all of them up?
Well, I'm asking what the process is.
I mean, I'll take a pass at the financial one.
Do you want us to send you written inputs on what we brought up?
Yeah, I mean, if you want everybody, if you have something on your list that is a concern, and we discussed it tonight, why don't you write it, what the goal should be, send it to me. I'll write mine up, and we'll bring them together in one list and go through them again.
Okay.
And same with you, Paul, you want to forward us what you feel, you think the goal's worth it for you, and you think the goals were for us? I just, I want us to all be on the same page.
You're basically going to synthesize everybody's inputs.
Yeah, I don't want to be defining the Board of Selectmen's goals. You know, that's, you know, I think the mindset will flow from yours. So I'll be looking to see, you know, what you come back with.
So do you want to move on to Code of Conduct? There, yes.
So I didn't notice that in, in our policies right now, we have a section called Code of Responsibility. It's just one paragraph. It's at the end of the responsibilities for the board, the select board. And it says that we, that we shall have, you know, some indication of a way that we, that we accept the responsibility to the town manager, and the town manager accepts the responsibility of the select board and authority. And I think this fits very well with that. I mean, we almost could replace that one paragraph in our, in our policies with the respective codes of conduct. I mean, maybe there needs to be some tweaking on the codes of conduct, but that would just kind of be my suggestion on, on where it would fall as far as, you know, somebody being able to find it.
So I guess what I'm struggling with is, we have the paragraph in our policy book. There's personnel standards of conduct in section eight. And I, some of this, I think, is reiterating what's already documented in the charter or in the policy book. And I get concerned about doing that because now you've got another document to keep updated and synced. And I, I mean, I'm wondering if it would be worthwhile considering just simplifying a little bit. And if we want to reference the charter or the board of, or the select board policy document, just put that in that, you know, we recognize our roles are in accordance with the town charter and the Board of Selectmen policy, or the select board policy document, because otherwise, we're, now we're creating a third document or a fourth document to keep updated. And I, I mean, some of what I thought, so the codes of conduct, I mean, it could be a page, and then there's other places where it's like, it could be a 20-page thing. So I think we have to, like, come to agreement on what we're looking for with a code of conduct. This, I think there's a lot of detail in this, and I don't know if that's what we want, or is it something that's at a higher level, that's like five to 10 bullets, that says, this is how we conduct ourselves with each other?
Well, I think that's a big part. I think this is more behavioral than actual responsibility and authority. I agree with that.
Right, so all these statements about responsibility and recognizing, I just, I just don't think this is the place for it. I think it's, you can say that in one sentence in reference back to the other documents that delineate responsibilities and keep the code of conduct to the, to the behavioral things that we want to encourage. And the other question I had was, do we need, if you do that, then do we even need two codes of conduct, or is it a code of conduct for this body, which includes the select board plus Paul? This is how we're going to meet and conduct ourselves with each other. And I know some of this, I'm thinking out loud, but this was the first time I, like, really kind of read through some of this. And I just, again, I question whether we should simplify it.
I mean, I.
Because I'll never remember all this.
Well, I don't think anybody's going to quiz you on it. What's number three, 3C? Yeah.
Somebody out there knows what 3C is.
Pat does.
I do.
And I honestly, Pat, I mean, I didn't have a lot of time to work with it, but that was my initial thought when I read it, was I feel like I'm reading existing documents. And then is there a way to maybe just simplify it?
Well, I mean, I just took this from another town.
I understand.
So, I mean, if you want to take the run at simplifying it.
I'd like to know what other people think before.
I mean, I read, read them through and thought there was a lot there. And I didn't, I didn't even think of going to one. I thought of shortening both, but maybe going to one does make sense.
Yeah, I mean, they are, they are.
They're very similar.
They're reciprocal, yeah.
Yeah. We're supposed to be one team, right?
Right.
I mean, we should review it and go back to another meeting, or one of our, put on one of the agendas, and just, like you said, simplify it, shut it up, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think at the very least it would be difficult to combine it into one.
Right, I think there's a lot of good material here to work with, so.
Could you do the same with internet and social media?
And then I, and then I just, again, I wanted to sort of sanity check, is there anything from the values, which is really what drives kind of behavior, that we would want to pull into this or not? And I don't know the answer to that, because like I said, I didn't have a lot of time to work with it. But if you want, we could take, do you want us to provide you inputs?
Okay, that would be fine, yeah.
Do you want to do it that way?
Okay.
I can do that.
Okay. All right, yeah, and I can work with Paul, too, on taking the town manager part.
Paul, you had one here, too. I mean, do you have any thoughts about what we're saying?
I think, I think it's, it might be a little clumsy to combine the two into one because they're sort of going different directions. Because you're going to, it's going to get wordy, you know, in terms of if you, if it's one consolidated document. I agree, we kind of have a shared existence, but I think you're going to get wordy. You may get a bit too wordy if you make them into one, but fine, you know, if you can do it, fine. But I just think it could get a bit wordy because the things of how the, you're dealing with a five-person board versus one individual, and then going, you know, but whatever.
Clean up both.
Whatever works, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then you also had the internet and the social media.
That's, that was not, I don't know why that's.
That came from the town. We, you know, in working with HR and so forth about having it, same thing. You see now towns have defined internet.
Oh, so these are proposed, or are these?
Yeah, no, these are proposed.
Oh, okay. I did not realize.
The town did do something on the social media or the internet because they had employees sign something saying they were aware of the policy.
Right.
Right? Like, I believe it or not, could call from some town employee saying, why am I asked to sign this?
Right.
And I said, I don't know anything about it. I didn't see it, and I read it.
So have these been, like, through legal and HR review and everything?
Yeah, this came, this, these were submitted by HR. When the word, when the word came out that the, in the office, that the board was going to look at goals and the code of conduct, then they said, well, can we throw on the internet and social media policy on there? And if you recalled, you, it was a social media policy for the board.
Yeah, there is one, yeah.
In fact, that came in when, at a concern.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's in section 416, there's a social media.
Right, yeah, I was looking at that, too, yeah.
That's not nearly as detailed as this.
Right. And I think the same thing. I think they get this from other towns, sort of like the code of conduct.
I don't, like, with these, I don't have a problem with the level of detail because I think they're more policy than code of conduct.
Yeah, and they apply to all the employees. It's not just the.
But these are already, my understanding, these were already done at the HR level.
Right. And that's what I think. These are the revised documents at HR to bring them to the board.
Right.
Well, and like on the internet code of conduct, Paul, the personnel document that I have, like, section 810 also has an internet code of conduct. So like, would this replace that, or?
I think it would supplement it.
It would supplement it? And then the only other question I had was, do these two documents apply just to paid town employees, or are these things that you would envision elected and/or appointed committees to also sign off on?
The social media says board committee members elected and appointed, very first sentence.
Okay.
So, and that was kind of a surprise to me.
So would internet apply to anybody who has a town account?
Right. Because if they're acting in the behalf of the, you know, the town of Chelmsford, what they do in their private email, their private time is theirs, but if they're, they're acting through the, you know, the town, then.
So, so like, we would be asked to sign off on this, too, then?
Yeah.
Yeah. I thought these were really well done. I liked them.
Yeah, I was good with those two. I didn't really have much commentary on the internet and social media ones. My understanding, those were already done. Town employees are aware of them, that was done.
There was, on page six of the social media, at the top, it just looks like there was a sentence or two sentences that got garbled, the thing that starts, to the extent their policies are inconsistent.
Yeah, and then the next one starts, scheduled, comma, the town, yeah.
Yeah, it just, it's, I don't think they're complete sentences.
Yeah, it looks like maybe somebody cut something off, cut and paste, and didn't paste appropriately.
But I thought they looked good. I like them.
Yeah, I think so.
I'm good. A motion to adjourn?
Thank you. Motion second, all in favor?
No, I'm going to have to do a roll call today.
Oh, aye.
Are you doing a roll call?
No, but all in favor?
I said aye.
Aye.
I didn't say anything yet. Thanks for your time, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.